Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. All members are present.
Father, we just come before you again. We ask for your wisdom and strength as we make decisions for kids and teachers and in this community, Lord. We just thank you for your goodness. We thank you for the good things that are happening in King Fisher schools. In your name we pray. Amen.
Public participation.
Greg?
Yeah, Kelly Buck.
All right. Hey, happy new year first and foremost. You know, I came to you guys five times over one issue. Five times. Five times. On record, five times. And, you know, it wasn't a big deal. It shouldn't have been a big deal. Other than you had a citizen who was, who came to the school board in questioning that position and some others on what they were doing about making decisions on a freaking traffic pattern. Shouldn't have been no big deal, but you shouldn't have a citizen coming to you guys and asking, "What's up?" I hope that you take this opportunity to evaluate the superintendent with, you know, it's your job. It's your job duty. I got a packet to see what it would take to take a position that you guys set in. And one of the things you have to do is hire that position and evaluate it. So when you have a citizen coming to you and saying, "What's up with children being unloaded in the street?", you should say, "What's up?", to that position and evaluate them. Do your duty. You know? I came to you guys. First of all, let me say, my favorite people on this earth call me grandpa. And when I seen him unloaded in the middle of the street, that's when I had to say something. So I came to you guys after my due diligence of going around town and being sent here, there, and everywhere in that position, giving me some information that wasn't true. You know, with that said, it just created a little antipathy on my part. And then whenever I had the DA, my DA that represented the good people of King Fisher, of the community, on our side, up against the school board, on our taxes, that just about took that antipathy to the next level. I'm done with you guys. I don't want to come up here and bark at you, you know, that the kids are safe, in my opinion. Mrs. Tolleson unloaded what seemed to be a whole class on the sidewalk from the Orr Family Farm at the end of October, first of November. As I drove by, I noticed that the whole street was blocked by the Civil Act of opening the door and putting a stop sign on the side of a school bus while the whole class was on the sidewalk. Great job. I don't know why it was ever changed in the first place. I don't know why he didn't question that position about why he went to the city and did it. I'm behooved by that. I'm done talking to you guys about this. Just take this opportunity to evaluate the superintendent on a yearly basis and know that nobody's perfect, not even a perfect stranger. Thank you for your time.
Isabella.
That's me. Hello, I'm Isabella. I'm the TSET wellness coordinator for King Fisher County. Some of you have already seen me and heard my spiel, but I'm here to share an opportunity with you all, and that is an opportunity for an incentive grant. TSET has, what we offer, something called a healthy incentive grant for schools. And I've got some information I can pass around to you, but the grant will be coming up open on Friday. And I've talked to some of you already about this grant opportunity. Basically, this grant is available to schools, school districts, and school sites for anything having to do with health and wellness. But in particular, some examples could be playground equipment, cafeteria equipment, even I talked with Principal Ferris about social-emotional learning curriculum. That's something that I know that he's been interested in. So I'd really like to see the King Fisher district public schools as a whole apply for this grant. We have never been awarded this grant before. In the county of King Fisher, only three districts have been awarded, and that was La Mega, Dover, and Oakheart County. So based on the enrollment that I assume about King Fisher's district, we could apply for upwards of $25,000 for this grant. And I'm gonna, if that's okay with you, just give you all some information here. So I just wanted to share this information with you. It is coming up on Friday to open the applications. I did go to an information session with the grants manager that oversees this grant, and she told me that of the grants that she receives, 30% get awarded. So it's a very high success rate. I also am a parent of King Fisher children, so I'd love to see this, you know, come into our community. And if there's something that you're thinking of, that you would want to see these funds go towards, you know, definitely, it's probably under the umbrella of what we can or what the grant can fund. Does anyone have questions about that? If anyone does have questions, all my information is on there. I'm here in town, and I'm happy to talk to anybody about, you know, getting an application submitted, even reviewing the policy before it does get submitted. If it's before Friday, I can actually submit that to TSET headquarters to like, just do a quick once-over to see what we do need to change or how we can improve our application. But again, it's really something that I would love to see King Fisher apply for and hopefully receive here and in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
C, discussion, possible action on the minutes of December 2nd, 2024, regular board meetings, and special board meeting in December 11th, 2024.
I make a motion to approve both sets of minutes. A second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. D, consent agenda, discussion, possible action on the following general funding encumbrances. 1588 to 1609 accounts payable. 7418 to 7439 payroll. Two child nutrition funding encumbrances. 2213 accounts payable. Building funding encumbrances, 2135 to 2138 accounts payable. Four change order listings in general co-op, child nutrition, and building funds. Five treasuries report. And six activity fund custodian report.
Okay, on page one of your finance packet on the encumbrances. On the general funding encumbrances, 1589, 1590 robotics. The 1593 to Jackson's of King Fisher LLC is 3M's bus repair, which is required. We gotta get that done. Then 1594 is our fire troll alarm system annual inspection, which we always get to enjoy. We had, thought we had that set up earlier, and for some reason, it did not happen that way. Wonder if you get down to 1595, that's once again for robotics. Parent squares for our annual fee. If you're wondering about why Beth Burkinball is listed as local apprentice, that's $40 an hour for weekday and $50 an hour for weekend. We encumbered $5,000. We don't think we used that much. Gulf Republic is for the dyslexia and prosperity bank. And then 1609 was for new electrical lines between APB and KHS buildings that we pulled the 30th of January. And then the surety bonds for all positions in-
December.
December.
30th of December.
Yeah, sorry. Was I saying June?
It's okay.
I'm losing it. There's no doubt about it. Sorry about that. Surety bonds for all positions within the administration office we gotta have, and then we got a CDL because we got a new bus driver. One of the police officers here in town is going to be helping us out with that. Going on to, over to page three, that would go down into the drug testing, you know, Atwood's and Dale's Electric are for electrical services district-wide. When we get down to Clearwater, that's who carries our natural gas contract. So we're doing all right on that right now. And then there's really not a whole lot else that's not self-explained. Rose and Steam Fist and Ringgold is the last part of the Fist and Ringgold bills that we have currently. Robinson Mechanical was for QHVAC. We're running into a problem with the QHVAC, and Ms. Jones is going to get to spend some quality time with Mr. Bragg tomorrow morning at seven because the system dumped all of the occupancy software for some reason. We're trying to figure out what's going on there. Our other option there will be to go in and change all those thermostats out to regular thermostats instead of the computer control. That's our next step. It's pretty chilly over there right now. If we don't get that back up tomorrow, we're gonna have to really consider what we're gonna do on Wednesday. I just want that to be very clear because we're not gonna put kids in there, and they're third through six, so that affects the middle part of the school. They really can't be home alone. So that means we probably, we need to probably call school on Wednesday if we don't get something done. High school, that's one thing. What if you got electricity? But whenever you get to that age, no, we can't mess with that. It'd be a virtual date, how we'd do that. King Fisher office supplies, so forth and so on. As you go down, that's pretty self-explanatory. We've, you've got payroll encumbrances on page four through page six, seven, all the way back over to page 10. We have $89,000 worth of encumbrances for fleet repair and maintenance, electrical repair here at the high school, and replace of the heat and air units, which was $60,000, which was about $60,000 less than what was on the south side of the building. Chad's really done a good job for us. We really appreciate his hard work. He's, he's been gutting it out and showing up whenever we call. Then over on page 11, we have further, we have change orders where we've got F&amp;M Bank, lease payment on the turf. That was interest on the turf payment is what we calculated there. Mop heads, Atwood's, King Fisher Public Works for utilities. Really, we're going to have, we're going to start doing a closer monitor on the building fund because we really are using it pretty hard right now.
Is that where those units came out of? The two units, the AC or the heat?
Yes.
And AC?
Yes, we're trying to stay in there because we've got full.
Yeah.
And we're gonna, what we're going to do, Don and Pam and I are going to sit down and look at what we need to do as far as the, what we want to aim for is to carry over balance. And we'll be running a little bit slower on that because, or probably bring that to you next, next board meeting because we want enough time to crunch our numbers. Whenever you get over to the summary page on page one and page two of the summary, that gives us what our warrants issued to date are. And this is, this really gets a little bit confusing because it looks like we've issued $36 million. And really, we haven't. It's just the compilation of all those years. So don't get along with that. We're not losing our minds totally. Roll over to general fund for operating. The treasurer's revenue statement. If you look at that, you'll see that we're, we're currently collected, our current tax, Pam reran that today so that we would have the correct tax amount that we've collected through today. We were really surprised at the number of people that paid property tax so promptly. I know it was because of the first-of-the-year tax, tax break. But what we're seeing is that right now, we're running about $2 million behind where we would normally in the local sources of revenue, which is not surprising because we haven't had our taxes out all that long. And sometimes mortgage companies don't pay until they actually have that tax in hand. County four mill is running about half of what it should be. It's at 238,000 versus 474. Whenever we look at gross production, we are about 900,000 under. Whenever I show you the numbers tonight, those are based off the earlier numbers that we had from up through January 1st. However, we are collecting at a reasonable rate. We do not know what state aid's gonna do yet. They haven't posted it yet. We do know that our flex benefit is gonna stay up, probably, but we will have a drop in yet once we get the new personnel report done February 3rd, which will carry over to August. And then as you notice, part of the reason that our total collections are down $3 million is because we haven't collected very much of our title monies yet, and we'll be doing that as soon as we send in the, as soon as we've sent in the C-7 form to increase our appropriation. And you won't have to vote on that, C-7 funds based off of federal funds. Moving over to the activity funds. I want to point out one fund in particular, in the AD fund. We've really had pretty good results with that AD fund. Mr. Blandell's been doing a really good job with the concession stands. Really been working hard at it. And he does a really good job of keeping up with what his profit margin is on pizza. Don't try to, don't try to scam him on pizza. It ain't gonna work. But everybody else has pretty good fund balances. If you look at Gilmore over in their activity fund, really good job. Heritage, pretty good job. And the Q's doing a pretty good job. Not that the other two buildings aren't, they just don't have cookie dough to sell. So they're kind of trying to live off that. I brought you the comparison of where we are to this time last year. If you look right here, our net new revenue is $878,576,76 cents less than it was in FY '25 and FY '24. And a large part of that reason is gonna be located right up in this area, and it's primarily due to the ad valorem that is gonna be collected late. Of course, we don't have as much hope of having as much ad valorem as we did have. Whenever you come down and look at our gross production down on this line on state sources of revenue, we are just under-collecting there. Before January 1, we were sitting minus 350,000. Now we're sitting almost minus 450,000. You gotta remember though, the number that you have on your sheets that are in your packet, not this, don't have gross production collections for December yet because those won't come out till Friday. So we're not, we're not, it's not time to have a panic attack right now. Because really, what we're finding is that we're, we're at $15,454 estimated collections. If you look at this, we're at $8,362,537. That's kind of unusual for King Fisher because normally, we're, we're normally looking at a collection that goes a little bit faster than this. And it's because of the gross production, and it's also because of the ad valorem. Our ad valorem is muted somewhat because we didn't, because of not being able to get the tax bills out. That's us that did that. But at the same time, we had to. But where we're at right now is, we're looking at having roughly a little over 52% of our revenue collected. All right? Normally, at this time of year, we're gonna be sitting somewhere closer to 67% to 70%. We can expect this to go ahead, and we're gonna collect out that other percentages. It's just gonna be in a different picture. I want to point out one thing to you here. The biggest difference between this picture and this picture is the size. If you look at that, if you look at, we're looking at 60% balanced forward, balanced forward being 60% of our revenue, whereas down here in '25, we're looking at it being 40% of our revenue. That's a harder number to overcome. Will we eventually overcome it? Oh, absolutely. But it's just gonna take time. Whenever we look at the expenditures in salaries, as we've looked at this, the top, the top table has the differences on it. The bottom, the bottom two tables, the top one's 25, the top one's 24, and the bottom is 25. As we look at this, your salaries are $32,208 more right now than what they were this time last year. The bargains are $12,044. That's because we had two positions, one that left because of health issues and one on disability. The other one left somewhere early in the semester. And those were showing us somewhere up around $52,000 more between these two areas. We've already dropped down significantly from extra, from the extra $22,000 in salaries from last month, and there was another $6,000 in bargains. What we're seeing right now is we're seeing a contraction of the staffing start to move some salaries down. We'll see this accelerate dramatically over the next three months. It's not gonna happen the first month, but the next three months it will. And we'll see that in a really big fashion. Well, it works, and if you'll notice down here, the total, the total for FY '25 is That is slowing very quickly because we've been able to squeeze some things out of the budget and make, and move some things over into the building fund. And we've also been able to hang on to it, just hang on to money period and sentence. If you'll note right here, services were $2,104,000 less this year so far than we were last year. By the time we get to the end of the year, we'll be roughly $6 million less because you won't have the Jody Hall payments, you won't have legal fees, and you won't have judgments. The supplies, we've really done a good job. This is a real indicator of where our health is because we're at $244,000 less in supplies. That means everybody's tightened up, which, good job, teachers, faculty, staff. That's, that's really strong work. Operating, we have $91,000 less because we have bargaining. It's kind of hard to buy things with a legal agreement. I want to remind you though that the dues and fees are $125,000. That is due primarily from the increase in assessors' fees to pay for, to pay for legal fees to protect. We've asked next year that they make sure and they, they break that out and segregate that off so we can see it. Are there any questions? No problem. Thank y'all for listening. Oh, I will be sending you out the spreadsheets tomorrow with the function object budget on them so you can see them.
I make a motion to approve item D.
Second. All those in favor? Motion passes. E, discussion, possible action on transfer capacity by site.
We have to do, we actually do ours actually by grade level. We've got 1,308 students enrolled as of today, ADM-wise. We do have transfer capacity that we put out there, and we have had people looking, and we've had phone calls today. So we do have people looking to bring their students to us, primarily parents that have put their kids in epic, which should be interesting, but you know, I don't, I don't know how that all will work, but we'll see what, what goes on.
I make a motion to approve item E.
All those in favor? Motion passes. F, superintendent's report.
Our principals are gonna talk primarily about their grade cards tonight. If you have any questions for them, please feel free. McCollum?
So for Gilmore overall, I think we kind of spoke about this last time, but overall, we were scored with a B. Definitely room for improvement. We see the areas that we need to improve upon, one of which, ELL, which we're really working hard to target that area that we're going to improve on. Academic growth, and then chronic absenteeism. So the way that chronic absenteeism is calculated is we do exemptions for students, like, you can start now, but throughout the year and then at the beginning of the summer, and we are able to exempt them if they have, you know, significant medical things going on. And so we, we try to all look into each case for students when they are absent for an extended amount of time. So all of those areas we know we're gonna, we're gonna work on. And then just real quick, today, we had a fantastic professional development. I'm sure Chris is going to talk more, Mr. Ferris is going to talk more about that, but Dr. Chris Culver, just the, you know, the little bit that we got to talk to staff afterwards was really positive. It was really a great way to set the tone for this second semester, and I'm really eager to talk to my staff tomorrow because I know that there's a lot of great takeaways from today. So it was fantastic.
Okay, for Heritage, mine mirrors hers pretty much exactly, an overall grade of B. Like she said, chronic absenteeism. One of the things that I started doing with my secretaries was when there is a student that's absent, one thing that can help us is the way they document their, how the student is absent, so that if there's any documentation that we can use to prove that they're absent, you know, and give it to the state, then that can help us for that chronic absenteeism report. So we've kind of tried to tweak that at Heritage so that we can make sure that we have the proper documentation. Some of that was missing last year. Our ELL, that, that is a large issue. There was a large influx of students. And so the way that that is calculated, it, it's really calculated kind of weird, but it's over the past three years actually, and there was a large number, I think there were 27 students. And so that is actually what is happening. And so it's not that we don't have students that we're helping that are ELL and that they're not having growth, it's just that there were so many and that their ability to speak English at the beginning was very low. at the beginning was very low. And so it's, they calculate it very unfairly. And so it's just not an accurate picture. It just really isn't. So I, it just gives a false reading of where the school's at. Academic growth, we were low in academic growth. The test scores were good. And I'll just be honest with you, some of the special ed testing that goes into that pulled that down a little bit. And the reason for that, that's something that we're going to work on. There's some of those items that, you know, I'm working on as a special ed director that, you know, there's just some of those things that we can help and some that we can't. But some of that goes into that. So there again, that's my report card. One other thing, I do want to say that the speaker was great today. But over the break, I was working on a report and Mr. Evans and I talked about the special education discipline policy. And that is something that I'm forming a committee on. And we're going to look at that policy and either, we're going to rewrite it and present it to you guys. And the policies, the way that special ed students are being disciplined is not, we're not all using the policy equally. So we need, we need to look at that. We all need to be on the same page. And we need to tweak the policy that's in place right now. And so that's something that needs to be done. So that's what, something that we're going to be doing and presenting to you guys.
Ms. Meyer, if I may. We, whenever we looked at that policy over the break, we looked, the policy is policy FO. And the main policy that she's needing is FOA. And for some reason, I know FOA was in there at one point in time, but it's not in booking. And we, and I looked on my desk and I don't have it on there. So we're going to contact OSSBA tomorrow and try to get a copy of FOA and move forward with that because good luck catching anybody over the hollies. You're just not, it's hard to do. But I do appreciate what, I do appreciate the fact that we are looking at that and that it's been brought to our attention because we want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
And regardless of whether or not, I mean, whether or not it was written, you know, a couple of years ago, five years ago, as an administration, administrative team, we all need to be on the same page. So whatever the policy is, we all need to be implementing the policy equally. So that's part of what we need to be on the same page.
That is absolutely correct.
So, and that's all for me.
For the Q, I wish I could take ownership of this since I wasn't here last year. I don't get to. So my, shout out to my staff and my counselors. We gained a letter in every one of our categories except for one where we stayed the same. So we are a B as well. Our academic growth is the same kind of as everybody's. We didn't go up quite as high as we needed to to get a B in that area. But we were 38% the year prior and we moved up to 51% last year. And so I feel like with the remediation and things that we're doing with our students right now and the benchmark testing that we're doing on a weekly basis, that I have no doubt that that will grow and become a B. And then I think that next year, we will be an A.
Okay, for the junior high, our academic growth was a C. And I was pleased with that. I think we could do better. The main points that hurt us was chronic absenteeism. We were at 87.5%. I would like to get us at 94, at least 94%. I think that would be a reasonable gain. And also our academic growth, we got, we had a C on that as well. And we were below the state average on that at 44%. So meeting with teachers over this next semester, we are going to look at that data and see how we can improve in those areas that we scored low in, in our academic growth.
I didn't think I was going to be able to make it tonight. So I apologize for not having mine on me.
This was a B. And high school did fairly well. We've talked about the high schools ACT schools. They are really working hard at the high school. And I do want to say one thing as we, as we move on from the superintendent's report, our teachers have done a lot this last semester. And at the meeting, at the meeting today, I asked the speaker to make sure and communicate to our teachers how invaluable they are because of their professionalism and their love for our kids. And I want you to understand, I've been in a lot of schools. I've worked with a lot of great people, including here. But I don't think I've been around a group of people that have been as professional as what they've been through all this. And I've been really, really proud to work with them. And I really want to tell you, I appreciate the opportunity you've given me work with them because they've done over and above. We haven't had one of them yet that has declined to do what was asked or what was needed. And we've had people step up and just do what is needed. And I, you can't, you can't place value on that in your seat, in my seat, and in their seats. And I just really want to say that publicly because it's important that our teachers are praised for what they do because they work hard.
Add in duty discussion, possible action to convene into executive session according to 25 OS 307B1, evaluation as a superintendent, extra duty contracts for purchase of Jan Swart preparation period, extra duty contract for purchase of Manny Owen's preparation period, in addition of one contract hour for Robert Barnett.
I make a motion to convene into executive session.
I second.
All those in favor, motion passes. King Fisher Board of Education met in executive session on January 6, 2025. Board members consisting of Earl Walker, Carl Crane, Terry Carter, Mary Jones, and Brad Redlock are meeting into executive session at 7:37 PM and return to open session at 8:00 PM. The matters as listed on the board agenda were considered in the executive session. No other matters to discuss. No board action was taken in the current session. Okay, discussion, possible action on the purchase of preparation period for Dan Swart academic year 2025, Manny Owen for the spring semester of academic year 2025.
I'd like to recommend that we purchase their, Ms. Swart has been working all year without her prep period. I'd like to recommend that we purchase that for the full year. And then Ms. Owen will be, we need to purchase her so we can do Jazz thing.
I so move.
I'll second.
All those in favor, motion passes. ELL discussion, possible action on adding one hour to the contract of Robert Barnett for the spring semester of academic year 2025.
I'd like to recommend that we add an extra hour to Mr. Barnett's contract because he has saved the children of King Fisher Public Schools from having to put up with Mr. Evans as a physical science teacher. We would not want to subject them to such. And Mr. Barnett has been really, really well as, and he is a great teacher. And we really appreciate him stepping up.
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
Say your name.
All those in favor, motion passes. Resignations.
We have one. Yes, Ms. Lattick.
We need action during?
Just, no, because there's no action out among there. We've already, whenever they turn it in to me.
New business.
I'd like to return to the employment venue again. Karma Reagan, I would like to ask the board to employ Karma as a one hour for eighth hour as cheerleader coach and then the remainder of the extra duty contract for cheerleading.
I so move. I'll second.
All those in favor, motion passes.
None at this time.
May I add one? Next week, on Wednesday, I think the high school is going to have a memorial service for President Carter, probably around 8:30 in the morning. Beginning first period, the band will play. There'll be a few remarks, Mr. Evans is going to say a few things. So board will certainly be welcome to attend.
And then also, this Wednesday, right, they're having?
The bullying training.
That's open to?
Yes.
Public?
To the public. And we will be sending a?
Well, it's went out on Parent Square, I think.
Yeah, it went out on Parent Square. It'll go out tomorrow.
That's at 6 o'clock at?
Heritage. We'll also be sending documentation to the court that we've completed, completed our requirements according to the settlement.
Thank you.
E.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
Motion passes.
Thank you all for coming.